Well, it is 6:01. I'm going to go ahead and call the city council study session to order. Will you please stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Sarah Diamond, Councilwoman Diamond actually asked to be excused at the last council meeting, so I'll move on to Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Thank you. Before we move into the presentations, I just wanted to say just a couple of things. First off, I'd like to thank the volunteers who put up the Christmas tree, our Public Works Department, who also worked with that. It's an absolutely beautiful tree, and I want to publicly acknowledge that and say that we are very grateful for what they have done. In fact, I think it's one of the prettiest trees we've ever had in quite a while. I also want to thank the chamber and all those who participated. It took a lot of people to make the Christmas parade come off. It was absolutely wonderful. I think we had more people than we've ever had, just absolutely amazing. So beautiful parade. And again, want to thank the chamber and all the volunteers there. And then just one last thing. I know that there had been three incidences, basically back to back within like 10 days' time, that really taxed our police staff. I just want to give them great praise and say we are very grateful for the service that they provide and the safety that is always at the forefront of their mission. So with that said, we'll go into special guests and presentations. And first up is the Office of Washington State Auditor, the Audit Exit Conference. And Kelly, I didn't know if you wanted to maybe do the introduction here?
I'll just let them take it away.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Kelly. We will go ahead and share our screen. We do have a PowerPoint presentation just to walk us through tonight. We have also provided a packet of information to you. Really, it says everything that we're going to say verbally, just in writing, so it's great as you walk away or to reference as we go through. As you said, this is the exit conference for the audit that we just performed, so we really appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Deana Garza, and I am the Audit Manager for the team based out of Bellingham that performs the audit each year. With me also representing my office are Suzanne Hancock, who is the Audit Supervisor, and Jordan Helms, who is the Audit Lead. And so both of them will be presenting portions of the presentation today. If we can go to the next slide, before we talk about the audit specifically, we just again want to appreciate the opportunity to present and really respect that you do so in an open public forum, because we recognize with our office that our results do have impact, right? As you're sharing the message with your citizens or knowing that you are accountable to other people. And so we want to make sure that we are supporting all that you are doing, that we are helping increase trust in government. That is our vision and one of our main goals around the state. So I think it's great for entities to share, for citizens to know that there is this audit function, that we do work very collaboratively with you and your staff, and we try and be very open and transparent about everything that we're doing. Our reports are published on our website. We have a citizen hotline if citizens have any questions. But we also want to make sure we're very transparent and open throughout the audit process. So if there's ever any questions on why we're auditing or what we're auditing, where the guidance is coming from, again, in our mission and our goal to support you and all your staff, we want to make sure that that's very clear. We kind of say that there's no secrets in auditing. We want to make sure that that is an open process. Because our last goal that you can see on the slide is an improved efficiency and effectiveness of government. We find many people are just trying to do the right thing, and it's maybe access to the information. And so where we can make suggestions to help tighten controls, or we can share information that we're seeing around the state, we're kind of in a unique position to be able to do that as we work with all state and local governments. So one of the things that I always like to talk about just on that third goal is our Center for Government Innovation. Our office, it's a division of our office, and so I think it's great to share that our office isn't just audit. Where audits sometimes are reactive, we're looking at a prior completed year. Our center is really great for different resources proactively, things that you're working on right now, things that you're interested in in the future. So one of the main things that we like to highlight or they're most well-known for is their online resource library. In there, we have different trainings, we have different checklists, really addressing a variety of topics that address all local governments based on common recommendations or common questions that we get. So we're always hoping to issue things that are very helpful, always looking for suggestions or an area that people may feel there could be more out there. So I definitely, you know, I know Kelly is our main contact, is very familiar with this and utilizes it, but there are things that are even outside of finance that we definitely recommend people are aware of. One of the things that I love to highlight is actually on the next slide is our cybersecurity program. We do have great and very in-depth different cybersecurity audits that are available, and all are done so at no additional cost, meaning that they are covered through our performance funding dollars. And so they're free to all of our local governments, as with all of the center's services are. But often, those cybersecurity audits, being so valuable, there is a waitlist. We're only allowed, allocated so much funding from the state. And so what we wanted to do is figure out a way to help more governments and help them more timely. And so this year, we established our cyber checkup program. This is a short assessment where someone designated within your staff works with a specialist from our office to go through a list of 20 common vulnerabilities, so we can do real great self-assessment with you, kind of a guided self-assessment of where are areas that might be vulnerable, or a validation of the process that you already have in place. With that comes a great report of different suggestions, so not only identifying it, but maybe identifying first or next steps forward. So it's already been very popular, and I definitely am recommending it to all governments of different sizes, whether you have an ID department or not. And so there is information on our slide. We have also provided some information at the beginning of the audit around the time of the exit communicate or the entrance communication, but we'd be more than willing to pass on information if any of your staff are interested. So I appreciate the opportunity to just start that way, kind of talking about what's new and going on with our office. But I would love to pass it to Jordan, the Audit Lead, to talk about why we're all here tonight, which is the audit that we performed. So Jordan?
All right. Thank you. I'm happy to be here talking to all of you today and this evening. I wanted to start out my portion of the presentation by just giving a thank you and appreciation to city staff that we worked with a lot this year during our audit. Finance Director Kelly Gonkin worked with us for pretty much all of the different pieces of the audit and really helped to coordinate the work and help it going, go really efficiently. So definitely wanted to call her out. Also, this year, as we'll talk about in a couple of minutes, one of the federal grant programs that we audited was the Federal Highway Program. And so the Director of Public Works and other staff there, so specifically Mark and Julie, worked very closely with us during that portion of our audit and provided just a lot of assistance, and were very timely with their responses and explanations. So that really helped us get through our work this year. So we really appreciate that. The audits that we performed this year, we did a financial statement audit of the 2022 financial statements. The reports, there's a draft version included in the packets that I believe that you all have, the results that that report highlights. The opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified or clean opinion. So we, after doing all of our work, were able to say that, in our opinion, they do clearly represent the activity of the city during the year. The internal control portion of that report does identify a one item that's reported a little later in the report as a finding related to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And I'll talk about that in just a couple of minutes, but I wanted to highlight some of the other really important pieces of the financial audit before we get to that point. There were, in addition to the unmodified opinion saying that their financial statements are accurate, we also wanted to highlight there were no uncorrected statements in the financial statements that are going to be published in the report. And then also highlighting a few of the areas that we specifically consider as part of our audit. And these come from auditing standards to look into these areas. One of them is the risk that management could make changes to financial records or the financial statements themselves, causing them there to be errors or inconsistencies in them. So we specifically, following standards, consider the risk of that during their audit. And we didn't identify any significant, any issues there in that evaluation. Also, some new accounting guidance came out, accounting and reporting guidance related to leases. So that required the city to do some evaluation of its lease activity and some additional disclosure reported related to that. So we did review that work during our audit, and again, no issues noted there. The finding that's included in the report relates specifically to the reporting of a grant program on the schedule, the city's schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And so some background to just explain what happened in this year, there was, so the city has a USDA loan, which it's had for between 10 and 15 years, which was, came from the USDA, and its federal funding was previously reported as a, on this schedule of federal awards. Since, during our audit, so for the last several years, it has not been reported on the schedule. During our audit, we identified some changes in the guidance coming down from the federal agency, saying that this should be reported on the schedule this year, and as such, subject to be included in our federal grant audit. So this worked with, the city worked with Kelly a lot, and also got some guidance, guidance from the federal agency to make sure that what we were telling the city was reflected the most updated and accurate intentions of the federal agency as well, and determined that this did need to be included on the city's report this year. And so it was added and included in our federal grant audit, which we'll talk about next. But due to the dollar amount of it being significant to the total amount of federal expenditures, following standards, it's required to be reported this way, included as a finding in the report. I'm going to go ahead and talk about the federal grant audit, as it's kind of leading up into that anyway. We also have the same scope for this audit. It was 2022. Our report, the results are presented similarly to the financial statement audit. There's an unmodified opinion on compliance for the programs that we audited. So no issues with the specific programs that we audited in terms of the compliance requirements set out by the federal agencies. And then also no internal control or compliance issues related that came up during our audit there. The programs that we looked at were, as I mentioned, highway planning and construction, as well as the USDA loan, which is added to the schedule during the current year. The total of both of those programs make up about 90% of the city's federal expenditures. So a good portion of it. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight again, even though there was this item where, from a financial perspective, this program was not included on the report and is being reported as a finding because of that, but then was added. Once we actually saw that on the report, selected it as required to audit as a program for our federal grant audit, and then performed that review, there was no issues identified with the program itself. And so that part of our report is completely, completely clean and reflects that, that result. I'm going to go ahead and go, pass it off to Suzanne to talk about some concluding pieces, but if there's any questions, you can definitely let us know at any time also.
Thanks, Jordan. Yeah, just to reiterate, just such a really, really, really clean audit from a compliance and a financial statement standpoint. So looking forward, we expect to publish our reports to our website in the next week. The report will be dated as of today, December 6. Kelly, as our main contact, will receive notification when that has published to the website. Following, following our publication, there is the data collection form. We'll, we'll reach out to Kelly to work on the certification for that, that there's a bit of a new process as the federal government has moved to a new online system. And then there'll be a survey that comes out. That, again, will go to Kelly, and we just appreciate any, any feedback from anyone at the city. We are always looking for ways to, to improve and just appreciate anything that you can share with us on that. Looking forward to the future, well, first, we've estimated the cost of the audit to be $33,200. Actual costs will approximate that, that amount. Please to report that we'll be coming in at cost. Our next audit will be conducted in 2024. Similar to this year, we'll have a federal and federal program audit. In addition to that, we, we cycle the accountability audit every two years. So next year's cost estimate includes that two-year accountability audit for fiscal year '22 and '23. We have included a cost in your packet for budget purposes, as well as information about those audits. That wraps up the items that we wanted to make sure that we brought forward to this meeting tonight. But before we close, just wanted to open it up to any of you for any, any questions or anything that we can clarify.
So does the council have any questions for the audit team? Suzanne, it doesn't look like there are any questions at this point?
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time and for the opportunity to present the audit results.
Well, Suzanne, Deana, and Jordan, we want to thank you for coming here tonight and presenting the audit. This is really a great way to do it. I know in the past, we've invited people to come in, and usually it's during the day, which makes it challenging for those who work. So much appreciation for you being willing to reach out to us tonight and presenting the report so all, all council members could hear. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, moving on to second presentation, the community action of Skagit County. I don't see anybody in the audience. Are they online? I don't see anybody online for it either. Okay, seeing that there isn't one, we'll move on then to new business. There is no unfinished business for us to look at. New business. The first one is the confirmation of Ulysses Tover and the Information Technological Director. And so I believe you're taking this. Are you not, Charlie?
I am. Yes. Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council. So we know him as Woody. And Woody's been with us for over a couple of years now at the city. We have included in the packet his resume and a draft employment agreement. Woody is the mayor's nominee, nominee for IT Director to replace Bill Chambers when Bill retires here, basically at the end of January. But we're proposing to have a little bit of overlap, so to have Woody actually start here on January 1. That's the way the contract's written up. Mayor Johnson and I interviewed Woody back in January, and Bill has been mentoring him for quite a while as well. But the mayor decided to offer him the position at that time, and he accepted. Of course, it's contingent upon council confirmation. So that's where we are. Bill wrote up, and wrote all of you I know, a message, and many of you met with him and with Woody. And Bill's going to say a few words here as well. Bill came to us saying Woody was his recommendation to succeed him in this position, and we couldn't agree more from our interview with Woody and our experience with him. We've had a chance, he's a known quantity to work with him for two years. He's been just growing and growing in that role. We've had a chance to put him essentially into the acting IT Director position a lot. And it is seamless between he and Bill, and they have slightly different strengths. And I know Woody's got plans for the future here for the city's IT operation. We're really excited about that. That said, we'll have more time to honor Bill in the future, but we will miss Bill as well. And we're looking, we're bringing this tonight partly because we are looking to backfill for Woody's position. Sooner than later, we'd like to get that ad out so that we hopefully don't have a time where we air down an IT staff member, because it is a shoestring, a stretched group, just the two of them doing all the city's IT. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Bill to say a few things, and then we'll turn it over to Woody to answer any council questions.
Okay. As Charlie mentioned, I'm going to be retiring in January after 16 years with the city here and over 40 years in public service. When we originally recruited to fill the IT analyst position, a couple of years ago, we had succession in mind when creating the job description and evaluating the applicants. And it became clear to me over the last, well, over the first year that Woody was, was here, that he had the knowledge, skills, and abilities and potential to step into the role and do a fantastic job. He's definitely proven his leadership ability by acting in my absence and chairing the Technology Advisory Group and several other things. An organization our size, the Department of only two employees, it requires a director who's not only has the management capability, but also has a strong technical background and has those skills as well. Promoting from within, I believe, sends a message that we value our employees and want to invest in them. Our organization has successfully promoted from within for the police department, the police chief and the fire chief, as well as some of our key lead positions in the Public Works Department. So I think it, it's logical to do the same as, same here as well. Woody has earned the respect and support of not only the senior management team, but all of the staff that he works for. He works, provides service at every location in the city and has good working rapport with all the staff. And as a Cedar Woolley homeowner and active community member, he's deeply invested in this community and the success of not only our organization, but the city as a whole. And I full-heartedly recommend Woody.
All right. Thank you. Woody, do you want to maybe come forward? I don't know if the council has any comments or any questions, but it is now open to you to do that. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I think this is what it's all about. And I personally have worked with Woody, and I think he is just an extraordinary gift to our community and to the city. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavaca?
Thank you. When the position first came about, I was in favor of seeing, you know, always applying out to see who would be willing to fill that position, what their resumes would look like. But in talking to people about you, Woody, and, and hearing feedback, how you adhere to the core values that were established by the team, and even assisted with that, I've heard great things. So I'm very excited that you're taking that role and that you've already assimilated within the teams, and you got good, good feedback and good support from everybody around. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with you and Bill, and I really enjoyed that discussion, getting to know you better. And it sounds like you've just done a great job here. Heard nothing but good things from the staff and from the mayor and from Charlie, and definitely from Bill too. So I look forward to seeing you step into that role, and congratulations.
Thanks. I do my best with what I got.
Councilman Burns?
I appreciated our conversation, sitting down with you and Bill to get a better idea of where you're at with the job. And I'm happy to support you. I like to see promotion from within whenever possible. And so I think you're going to do well. I hope you'll continue, continue your training as things get even more complex.
Thank you. Councilman Owen?
Well, I really don't know you. I've never, really never met you. And I know one thing, if Bill says you're okay, you're okay. I hate to see Billy Boy exit, but I'll be right behind him. So, but anyway, congratulations, and I'm sure you'll do a fine job for the city.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to say, on behalf of the city, boy, we've seen you firsthand. We've been blown away by some of the ideas that you've come up with and made them happen, really streamlining some, some programs that we have. You're just, you're exceptional. You really are. You're a gift to the city, and I'm so glad that you're here before us. And I'm so glad that you are willing to accept the nomination. So with that said, let's confirm him. Is there a motion to confirm?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion or comments? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Congratulations, Woody. Looking forward to working with you over the next four years.
Thanks, and thank you all. I'll continue to do my best and provide the best service I can for the city.
And he's also so humble, isn't it sweet? All right, thank you. Second item on the agenda for new business is the economic development strategy. And Mr. Bush, we'll take this back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And I'm carrying this forward from the Planning and Business Development Committee. So this has been one of their big work pieces, work items for the past year. And I'll probably turn it over to Councilmember Burns and Councilmember Lavaca to talk more about it here in a little bit, as well as Councilmember McGoffin, the members of the committee. But the short version of this is that the city's economic goals include the goal to improve the city's economy. And as a part of the strategic operating plans that we have for the departments and how we execute those goals, one of the things we had in there was to develop an economic development strategy. The thinking behind that initially was about the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds that we had available to us, and we had allocated to economic development, and to use this strategy as an approach to investing those funds. But there's additional benefit to having a strategy that goes beyond that, which includes potentially benefiting the city's comprehensive plan update that's coming. So we have to write the economic element portion of that, so we can certainly provide this strategy to consultants and others working on that as, as an input, but also just to look at future budgets in the city. If the council has adopted a strategy, as we look at investments, we will be prioritizing these things more highly if there are things that the council has said they want to do. So you had three council members working on this with initially another piece that was in the, the council's goal-setting discussion from April of '22, was having a focus group, economic development focus group, having businesses in and having a roundtable with those businesses. And we had a full group of, I want to say 10 or so businesses in here for a long meeting one evening. And so their input is really what generated- And so their input is really what generated the beginning of this plan. And then from there, there were meetings with other economic development partners like the Economic Development Alliance of Skagit County, the Port of Skagit, the Cedro Woolley Chamber, and any other partners who would really talk to the committee. So all of that input is rolled in here as well. And then the committee has worked through the prioritization of the items in here and tried to refine those. I think this plan could probably use a little more refining to make these action-oriented, more action-oriented statements. But we, my suggestion and my recommendation to the committee and my, you know, what I asked them for the ability to do is to bring it to you all in a work session to just get your feedback because I don't want to do a lot more work on this if it's not really on point with where the council wants to go. So that's why it's before you tonight. It's really for discussion, looking for feedback. Chair Burns and other committee members more to add on it?
Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Charlie, for that summary. We spent a lot of time on this. As Charlie said, we had the roundtable with local business owners, had some really good discussions on what they wanted to see in the city going forward, their questions, concerns for development in the area. Had good conversations with E-DASK, the port. It was interesting to hear more in-depth of what plans were for the port of Skagit over here. Also, talking with, if I remember correctly, we had somebody from the county, the Chamber, hearing more from Monique about what business owners in the area were interested in seeing that she has heard, kind of trying to work through some of the things that might help entice business to the area to ensure that we have a more robust business economy here, as well as more jobs and housing to match what is needed for those businesses to thrive. Sure that the other members also have something to add to that?
Thank you very much. So with the businesses that first came around the roundtable, I think everybody just reached out to a number of businesses and seen who would come. And so every council member involved in that and some of the city administrator just reached out to various businesses and people. So we did have, you know, we were blessed with like Ann Johnson from Federal Hearing or Dr. Stiles and various businesses and people from the, from the local community, which is great to start the list off. And it was great to hear their feedback. And we assembled the full list with their feedback and then refined it based upon stuff that's within the city's umbrella and our silo and things that might be outside of our silo, we moved off to the side. So on that list, there is a number of things on there, and I would recommend to the council altogether to go through there. Look at what's applicable. Let's look at what the priorities should be because ultimately it is a good thing to have a plan to build up the, the presentation of our city, to build up the feel for our residents and the opportunity to work and play here and to shop here. That helps local businesses, it helps our residents, it helps the tourism, it helps visitors all the way around. So it'd be nice to have that.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to add one additional thing. I met with the NWIRC this past week regarding their new Innovation Center going in. And one of the comments that really stuck with me is they work with Snohomish, Waukam and Skagit County. And they said Cedro Woolley is one of the more friendly cities to work with. And I didn't, I didn't realize this, but other cities and jurisdictions can actually be a little bit like hard to do innovation, to do new projects, and they don't have something like this that's really clear of, you know, where someone can come in from the outside and say, well, this is where I could fit in your guys' plan. So I see there's a great value to, you know, spending the time to go through this and make sure that it, it works for not just the people that are here, but the people that are looking to come into Cedro Woolley and help fulfill our vision. So, thank you.
All right.
Be helpful to get feedback from the council if any of the other councilors have feedback at this time.
Go ahead. Okay. I think you guys did a good job, and I myself really would love to be on this committee. So I don't know if there's opportunity for the next go-around because I think I could bring a lot to it, as well as being the former Vice President at the Chamber. I see a lot of things that are Chamber-related, as well as like community and collaborations and things that you can do. My feedback would be to streamline and focus on certain things so that you can bust those out and get them done. A lot of those things look like they could be, and then you could just go on to the heavier items, if you will. So I would love to be on that committee to help dive into each thing and then bring it to the council, streamline it, keep it simple, and get things done. Some of the things that I see on there that kind of is worrisome is a lot of those things look like they would take a lot of extra time and maintenance. And a lot of times people say, oh, I'm going to, I'm going to make that rose garden, you know, perfect example out at the riverfront. What does the rose garden look like now? So actually looking at what they want to implement, would it be feasible? And then who ends up having to take care of those things? Planters that sit out and they don't change the plants out, and it ends up looking junky. And our crews have to then step up and clean up the mess when they don't have the time. So things like that, to then bring back and just cross those off the list and keep it simple.
All right. Councilman Owen, any comment? Councilman Allen? No comment? Okay.
If I may, if I may also, that's a great point too, and I appreciate that, John Allen, or Councilwoman Kestie. So some of this stuff is being accomplished through the grant program. And I believe, obviously, we can only do so much as a city, and a lot of things can be outside of our scope. And so being able to, to kind of streamline and focus that grant program that's happened into some of those, I think in 2024 for summer, we are going to see some of these really shaping up. And I agree, having that wisdom on the council or on the committee would probably be awesome if it's, if it's there.
Anyone else? Is that helpful?
That's helpful. I'm hearing from the council that this is, it's helpful to have a strategy, keep working on it generally. Keep it, keep it in the Planning and Business Development Committee.
And one thing that was mentioned is that low-hanging fruit, and I believe we talked about that in our committee meeting, is have that low-hanging fruit of easy attainable goals that we can measure and then be able to set that forth as, hey, these are achievements we've made, and that'll help us propel towards those long-term goals. So yeah, those low-hanging fruit would be awesome.
Are you looking for more specific needs or?
Nope. That was perfect. Thanks.
All right. Anything else you'd like to see on this? Okay. All right, thank you. And the last item on the new business tonight is the archway proposal. And Charlie?
Yeah, and I wrote this up. I'm going to send it pretty quickly to Councilmember Lavaca since a lot of the material is his that I included in her.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So there was the initial idea in the Parks and Rec Committee meeting to figure out what can we do with that trussel, because it's rusty, it gets tagged up. And in the meeting at first, it was a lot of people within that room. It was my first meeting. John Allen, you were on that, and then same thing with you, Glenn, or sorry, Councilwoman Kestie, Councilman. So in that, we had a good discussion about what can we do, and there were so many stopgaps with BNSF. So we weren't able to really go forward with a lot of putting anything to cover that. The idea came forth to move it about 50 feet on either side of that trussel so that we don't need their approval. We can just go forward. In order to do that, of course, we would have to have some design set forth and some ideas in order to move that idea forward. It was agreed upon to move that idea forward. I lacked the, the skill set at the time to understand that I needed to bring that before the council as a chair. And I was working with Mark Freiberger as my liaison in that. So we just didn't get good collaboration on what my next step should be with him. However, we did go through, we evaluated where that could go. He liked the idea, the committee liked the idea. It sounded like the mayor supported it, Charlie supported it. A lot of local businesses really got behind that and supported that. So we evaluated the areas that we could do it with the hopes that we can even get closer into the BNSF easement. And so we were, we were going to reach out to those guys and see. But we needed to get council to help us by approving this to continue to move forward through the city and give us the permission to keep carrying this forward. Morgan Benson is a design engineer. He's designed a few things around the town, including down at Riverfront Park Memorial Side Park Archway, so smaller. He happens to live near there as well, and he's an excellent design engineer. And he's the one who's been drawing this up. So we can kind of give ideas, and then he's the mastermind behind working this to a reality and something we can actually visually see what that will look like. His time, of course, is valuable, and so I don't want to ask him to go too far or anticipate too much without knowing that the council is supporting this. So we've been at a little bit of a lop for about a year, and I appreciate your patience with that, Morgan. But yeah, if the council is so inclined to move forward with this, I think it would improve our community greatly. If you want to go down. So right now, this is kind of what it looks like. And on either side of the roadway, this is a state highway, by the way. So we would need additional approvals. This isn't like Anacortes, just putting something over a roadway. There are certain requirements that are needed, and we would need a structural engineer. But we do have two sidewalks, and we have the road to go through. And so if you continue to go down, I'll work more off the visuals. You can see what the concept looks like. And what that is, is something over both sidewalks and something over the roadway. The ones over the sidewalk are towed inward in order to add additional structural support to the actual archway, but also would allow for banners to be hung by the city or businesses such as Blast from the Past or Fourth of July Parade on either side, a way to bring free advertising and, and really encourage people to come visit the downtown area. Hey, Mark. Also, the little shelters on the side would add additional support, but they would also bring an artistic look and an opportunity to have collaboration with other communities or even within artists of our own community. So we have the Lager Rodeo, and they have a lot of sculptures around. We can utilize some of their art if they were so willing or work with other artists throughout different communities and do an art trades program where we actually, you know, put their art on display, and, and we have the benefit of that. When you go to Winthrop, when you go to Twist, when you go up over the Cascades, a lot of people, they bypass Cedro Woolley. And there's nothing to really stand out that causes them to remember Cedro Woolley. And I think something like this would cause them to remember Cedro Woolley. And if done correctly with collaboration within our community, it'll be a staple that lasts a long time. And it would be an imprint that Cedro Woolley has on postcards, brochures, things around, just like some of our sites downtown. And the idea here isn't that this would be the main site, but to draw them into our main site, which is our downtown. Thank you. Morgan, do you got anything to throw in on that?
Only to say that scale is a lot bigger than what it seems. So those side art are pretty, pretty large.
Now, this model is a rough model. It would be dimensional, so there would be layers. And in those layers would be like solar lights or something of that instance. That would be committee, Arts Committee, the council, working to see what, what the best way that the shape would look like for the community. But it would be nice to have a warm glow at night, and it would be nice to have a backlit and kind of the theme in those mountains and those trees. The two side images you have are like, right now Morgan's got in there a saw, and he's got logs on the other side. Train, yeah. But it's up for discussion. And so it's, it's rather large, but it could be, you know, our community has so much history, so much in logging, so much in the railroad, so much in, in the foundry. I mean, we just have an incredible history, and to utilize past, present, and even future in this would be an amazing achievement. Do you guys got anything to?
Councilman Burns.
One of the reasons that I wanted to see this come into the council is because of the discussions with the Business Development Committee where we heard about the aesthetic of the city, drawing people into downtown, getting them to come off of Highway 20 and check out our community. And I think something like this will help with increasing the visual appeal of Cedro Woolley as they are passing through. I like how it has a lot of structural integrity. I personally would like to see some sort of incorporation of timber, only for visual effect. I understand that structurally it needs to be metal, even if it was just a timber outer case so that it looks like the uprights are logs, just to kind of incorporate the, the logging tradition with the Cedro Woolley community. But I really like the idea of the backlights. I think that'll make it stand out a lot, as well as the ability for advertising for events. I believe that that will help. And my thought when you were talking about it is the side piece, having a sign that's underneath, that's always there, that says, you know, historic downtown this way, something of that nature to help draw people because you have brought up, Councilman Lavaca, the size of the signs that tell people where things are. So having that, that huge area, sure, it's going to be covered up sometimes with a banner that says, you know, Lager Rodeo or so on. But whenever there's not a banner there, having something that directs people towards our businesses might be a nice, nice thing to use for it. That's my thought.
Yes, go ahead.
I just really like the idea. I can't tell you the number of people that have driven through Cedro Woolley, and they have no idea that downtown is just to the right. Like I was coaching soccer this past summer, and at our end-of-the-year party, a couple of parents said, I didn't even know that there was a downtown right there. And so I think something that, you know, so many people take Highway 20 through town and from, you know, the freeway to Cook to here, like they just don't know that there's this historic gem right before you go over the mountains. And I think something like this is, you know, going to really change how people view Cedro Woolley. And I really like the idea of having some indicator, whether it's a design feature or something really obvious that just states like, hey, turn right to come see it. I think that would be an important piece that I'd like to see as well. But I, I wholeheartedly support something like this. So thank you guys for your efforts on it.
Anyone else?
Absolutely. I thank you so much for your time that you spent on this. I think it's a wonderful idea. And weren't you saying that it would also go on the other side as well, so leaving the gateway? Like, do you have that up there as well?
So that one's in other model drawings. We didn't add one in here. There's an interactive one. As we move forward, we'll have a roundtable, and Morgan will bring the computer, other monitor, and you'll actually, he'll model it in front of us, and we'll see how that.
Thank you for that. That's a lot of time and a lot of work, so thank you very much.
Anything else?
Glenn asked an interesting question. Funding. Where does the funding come from? Obviously, it comes down to money, right? And that, what can we afford? The next big thing is feasibility, and I think Mark could able to support part of that feasibility discussion. But as far as funding goes, it would take some city funding for that. But a lot of the funding would come from businesses that would support it with their product. You know, the posts, it would be great, like the Anacortes, Highway 20 going towards Anacortes, they have just the street sign, and it's got two posts that are pretty thick steel cast iron, and they go up. We would need something strong like that embedded in the ground to hold up to the wind and stuff and be over State Highway. The rest of it can be kind of artistic. We got to look at vandalism. I mean, we got to look at the safety of kids trying to climb up and destroy it. And they, we don't want them falling off in that process, so we're kind of looking at that too. But the sign itself, the archway signs going up, at the time, we did have support for local business to do the water jet and the, the actual making of it. And then other businesses were willing to support the side structures coming up. Other businesses wanted to put in as well. So what you would have is different businesses along the side that have supported it. And there's not going to be a bigger sign because somebody did more. They'll all be the same-sized signs because we're all one community, and all the businesses that I spoke with enjoyed that. So funding would come from the community, and it would come from the city as well. Mark?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if Mr. Freiberger wanted to come up. Have you had any comments or?
Well, it's, it's a wonderful concept to do this, no question about that. There are some technical issues to deal with. We have the high-voltage power line that's on the south side of the highway there in the vicinity of Tressle. And when we looked at this before, it appeared it would work, but it does depend on how deep the sign is, to whether that can be done safely. Power lines, I think their bottom is 35 feet. We need to maintain probably 18 foot of clearance from the bottom of the structure. So it just really depends on how thick the sign is. structure, so it just really depends on how thick the, uh, sign is.
Do you have an idea of how tall it is from the road?
Well, not too much that, but you definitely decide yourself on the Tressle.
Um, I'm not sure the dimensions, was that on your other?
So, uh, is it down lower? I don't know if it's on this one, but we do have the model of it. That side archway actually droops down. It comes down as a stagger, so the one that goes over the truss, well, it would be even lower than that. Um, but the one that goes over the truss will be at the same level as the truss. So, the power lines look to be about twenty feet up from when we first described, from where that, uh, side archway would be, the one going over the sidewalk.
So, what would probably be a good idea is to get an actual digital train model of it on this, which you probably have that capability, give some survey data, show the power lines in relation to that, probably answer some questions with the power company on how much clearance you need to get. And are you, did I hear you say you're looking at one of two of these, one on either side?
One on either side.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, so, um...
So, we had discussions with Dave on trying to get the model, so that we can provide that to Morgan in order to draft this up. It was months in the making, a lot of, you know, emails trying to get, and then we, I don't think we got it, though. Um, and so, if we have that on file, and that's really what we were looking for, is to get a model of that train track in the bluff, and see where kind of we are, that the city would have on file, just like an old draft or something, that we can provide to, to Morgan, and not have to go out there and recreate the wheel. So, rather than using all of Morgan's time on, on doing stuff that we already have, that's where we would come before the council and see, can we get the authority to kind of move forward with the, the other, the, um, branches that would be involved with that, to be able to get support?
Yeah, I, we have, we have a survey from the project that was built in 2012, when we widened the highway. Uh, whether it would have enough data points on it, I, I do not know. But we had quite a bit of information in the vicinity of the Tressle. I, we can probably reconstruct that, uh, find that in the files, get that to, we're going to have that, and see if it would be usable. Um, do not know if it has the height of the power line, that's probably something that could be, be resolved. Um, so, that, that information, I think, would be easy to acquire. Um, I guess the operative thing, the thing that Charlie and I have talked about this is how much time you want staff to invest in this at this time. We've, uh, as you probably realize from my reports to you over time, we've got another busy year planned for next year, and with my upcoming retirement and David's, uh, we're going to be scrambling pretty hard to get, uh, what we have to do done over the next, uh, six to ten months, uh, there. So, that's, uh, that's just a constraint we have in terms of hours to do things, uh, there in public works and engineering. Things like pulling up map data, we can, we can do that okay. Uh, if we have to go to a lot of effort to coordinate things on this, that's going to be tough, and I really would need a decision from you on what we prioritize. And just to give you a, a broad outline, I produced for Charlie recently the projects that we've got coming up that are funded, that we need to stay on top of. Homestead Park, that's almost a $2.7 million project, uh, that we've got planned for next year, and I'm spending quite a bit of time right now in that, trying to find lots of permitting, so we can get the thing out to bid in the period of winter. We have the intersection project at Nine in Madargo, um, that's in full design, by the way. Uh, that's a $4 million project. Uh, we just received another award from TIP, uh, for another overlay, uh, that's on North Reed Street, and that's a $577,000 project as well. And the vehicle storage building is a other major one that, uh, I have the, um, design contract for that on your packet agenda for the thirteenth, where you look at proposing how a car that you do that design, or the designer for the eight buildings, which is completed. Uh, that's an $800,000 project. I'm throwing numbers at you, but there's a lot to do. Uh, we were extremely busy last year, as you know, with the, with the $8 million building project we did, plus our other normal road projects, and it's shaping up to be very similar year for us. And, uh, and while we have added Kyle, uh, into the mix, which is helping, um, I have him slated, and we have, um, funds for, uh, the remaining funds from the, uh, TIB Complete Streets Program, which is almost $400,000, that we have to spend next year. It's a three-year window on those funds, and I have him designing the sidewalk project. It's very well needed, and we've talked about it in council, uh, to extend sidewalks to the senior center along State Street, and then we have a stretch also up near, uh, the, uh, one of the schools, the sidewalks in terrible shape that we're replacing, so we're all going to be pretty busy, and that's just a reality that maybe you're aware of. Those are all in the pipeline already. I can't really turn them off very easy. We've talked about, you know, do we do light projects, do we do things like this? That's probably not even feasible for us at this point to do that. So, those are all good things. This is a good thing, too. We just need to know how to program this.
Councilman Burns?
To me, uh, we'd be adding something to the pipeline, so to speak. It would be my expectation is, we're putting this in line. Um, that's the way I would be looking at it. I would love to see it done faster, but understand that, you know, you, you've already started on these other projects. There's money set aside for them. Um, so, I would understand, uh, that, as long as it did continue to move forward. If there's things that can be worked on, where you're able to get data for them that doesn't take too much time, to try to keep the project steadily going, I would appreciate that. I don't know how much, you know, if you were going to sit down and work on this, start to finish, I don't know how long that would actually take, how much of this would be you, or how much you'd be farming out for design, uh...
Well, uh, ultimately, you know, we, we manage these projects. I, we don't have the capacity to do much in-house design on that. My staff is fully occupied, and it's good to do it. If we hire the consultant, uh, to help out with this, certainly that's a doable thing. We watch that and keep an eye on it. Pulling the data, uh, the survey data, it's going to involve a little bit of time, just from the aspect, uh, we should be able to retrieve what we have, then, uh, we'll have to use an on-call surveyor to supplement that, I'm pretty sure, uh, to get all that data. But you're right, uh, Councilmember Burns, we, we can get that in the pipeline and have the project planned. So, for instance, if you said, you know, let's, let's do preliminary planning and then build this in 2025, then that's, I think that's a doable thing. Like you said, too, Mark, build this in three months, and just have to say, what do I take off the plate?
So, I'll say one more thing before I, I let, uh, Councilmember Kestie go. Uh, I would be curious what it would cost to farm this out to, uh, an outside group that would, uh, design it for you, i- if someone's willing to do it for a reasonable fee, just for us to have an idea what that would cost, if there's council members who want to see it go faster. Um, but, thank you.
Councilwoman Kestie, did you have a comment?
No, I'll keep going.
Okay. Councilman Lavaca?
If I may. Um, so, yeah, we first talked about this, like, a year and a half ago, and there's, there's been a lot of projects, and we really didn't get a chance to get it before the council on the Parks and Rec Committee. We did get a chance to go down and just do a quick feasibility outlook about, um, the fiber optics, the sewage lines, any kind of impediments that would might be in the way. Ultimately, BNSF, if we wanted to go with pilings, which I probably wouldn't want to go with pilings, it'd be much easier to dig and set pads. Um, so, it'd be fine to, to plan it out, but it would be nice to start the project, right? Um, we do have a design engineer right behind you who has been designing it. I think working with a structural engineer would be a wise thing. I would recommend that the council, you know, possibly take either from just Council Strategic Fund, or the ARPA Fund to set $10,000 aside to start the process, to see where can we throw the pads, and can we get the pads down? Then, from that point, we can design the archway with the pads in mind. Now, we have the design with our design engineer and a structural engineer consultant in order to determine what size of pads and the depth needed for that activity, but that wouldn't be a weight on our planning department, or our, uh, public works department. But obviously, you guys would be involved with the consultants. So, that would at least allow us to move forward, and then after that, if we can get pads developed, then building out the rest of the archway, you know, uh, could be done on, on, as we go, and we can reevaluate how that looks with little impact on, on the public works.
Okay. Councilman Allen?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I'm, I'm taking all this fairly well right now, and I understand, uh, you know, Mark is being very honest when he said it wouldn't go, even take place until 2025. Uh, you've got three new council members coming on in three and a half weeks. I think they should have some input. I think it's pretty well decided among the remaining ones that, that it's a doable thing, but, uh, I don't think we're just going to all die, and if we don't get this done in the next three weeks, or three and a half weeks. I, I think you get the idea that they want it to proceed, Mark, but I don't know, um, you know. I, I just think the, the next council member should have an input on this.
I think that's fair. Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Um, I just had one question regarding, um, some of the permitting. Since it's over the state route, do we need to submit any sort of plans before we start, like, doing our own planning and any sort of modifications? Do we have to?
We need to permit from the Department of Transportation, and we'll be, if we're working within the BNSF right of way, we'll need to permit from them as well. We might be able to keep this beyond their right of way and accomplish the goals as to something that, you know, that, that's where, I think his input's going to be really important, because if you get a, a, a model of this to where we can show the bridge and that, you could look at it from various angles and see, is this, I'm doing what you want to do, which is kind of conceal the somewhat ugliness of the bridge, and the bridge view to the engineer. Um, so, um, that, that's going to be important, uh, in the process, how you lay that out.
So, would it conceal? Would it conceal the, uh, bridge, the way that it's shaped, and we have to have it high enough because of, um, trucks and whatnot? So, it probably really wouldn't conceal the bridge, would it? I, that's my question. What I do like about it, what I do like about it is that it does offer opportunity for advertisement, or to make people aware of how to get downtown, but, um, yeah, I, I, you know, there's, I don't know if it would really cover the bridge. I'm wondering if there is, on the highway, maybe someplace else that would make it easier to kind of expedite, the way we wouldn't have to have so many, um...
I think Highway 20 is a pretty intensely-traveled road, and actually, nothing draws you into Sejra Woolley until you get to, uh, Ferry Street, and at that point, you got the, the train, and you go down there, but it's kind of towards the edge, and then you keep going, and that's the very next thing you see. Um, it wouldn't conceal it, we're not burying it, we're not, but you wouldn't re, it wouldn't be what stands out in your mind when you drive through it, right? It's not going to be like, oh, yeah, the train trussel plus this thing in front. It's going to be that, oh, yeah, and then there's a train behind it. Um, so, that would be the intent there. Uh, I would love to see other types throughout the community, actually, actually, uh, I'd like to see us draw attention over there on State Street and Trail Road, saying, "Hey, go this way, people." Head, head into town early, right? I would like to see the fence line on Nine coming into town cleaned up, that wooden fence all broken up, blackberry bushes. I'd like to see Highway 20 cleaned up, and all the entrances making our town look beautiful. The fence going around Sealand being a nice black fence, or cast iron postings, or whatnot, something more than what it is. And so, it's just a step in that direction.
Absolutely. We've had those conversations with Sejra, who actually owns, um, Skagit. We've actually had that conversation. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I was just thinking, when you guys were talking about that, I know currently in its state right now, it doesn't work, but the first roundabout around Sealand, I know, like, long-term plans, at one point, there was a hope that that road would actually go from the roundabout into downtown. I could see this being a perfect spot on the...
I was thinking the same thing, and we do have an easement, do we not? We have an easement from where it opens up. You're talking about the second roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
Right there, um, there's actually a gate that was built to let the trucks in and out. It would go through, um, Skagit Industrial Park, what I still call it, Skagit Industrial Park. Don't we have an easement there where that could happen?
Well, and I, I think it's important to that point that we need to be a little flexible on where we place this, because I, I honestly don't know how that power line's going to look like this.
Okay.
Until, you know, we get some details, get some, get some drawings. Uh, and you could accomplish the purpose of, uh, having a sign that gets people's attention, that there's more to Sejra Woolley than just, you know, the little bits you see going through on the highway now. Um, you could accomplish that probably in a couple of other places. The one in Anacortes is kind of in the middle of downtown.
It is, yeah, it is.
Not at the entrance necessarily.
Mm-mm.
Uh, but you could have one on Highway 20, uh, just to the east side of, of the Ferry Street intersection. You could have another one down at the township, uh, end of the thing, and, or any variation in between, uh, which would, if you're going to build two of them, that would be another way to do it. I will mention, too, just in the longer-term, uh, things that I know are happening, I'll be meeting on December fourteenth, I believe it is, with DOT. Uh, the Department of Transportation has been given a mandate legislatively to, uh, be more proactive in working with the local agencies on, uh, the projects they build through towns like Sejra Woolley, cities like Sejra Woolley, to the extent that, uh, they've told me that it's very likely that some of our existing intersections or signals could, we could approach them about rebuilding the roundabouts. Um, that includes the one at Township and, and Highway Nine North, which we just rebuilt. Um, these wouldn't happen immediately, but roundabouts offer a, a really good opportunity for entry signs. The one, none of the folks have ever seen, the ones that I was involved in building over in Caldwell, but I have two of them bookended in the town, and, and we put a very nice, uh, rockery wall, and a, and, and about three-foot-tall, cut-out stainless steel letters with the city's name on it. Sejra Woolley's a little more difficult, a link, but, but those things are, are really good advertisements for the city, and, uh, that's a possibility for down the road. We're kind of talking about that on the one on, uh, Jamison and Highway Nine right now.
Yeah, yeah.
A grant that came out of that visioning process we did, uh, last summer, that, uh, they're looking at doing some kind of art in that. So, those are, those are good possibilities, and as already mentioned, there's the one there at Reshaw that is, uh, just, uh, folders right now, or, or rocks, so, you know, there's, there's other possibilities. So, I, I think it, it's important to maintain some flexibility on where you're going to put it, just because of the potential challenges we're running to design something there.
Just hearing people talk, it sounds like that there may be, um, more discussion that the council may like to have, as far as the visioning. Um, I don't know, you know, how the council feels about that. I do appreciate what Councilman Allen added as far as the future council members coming in, because they are the ones who would be help carrying this forward. So, um, I don't know, what, what does the council want to do here? What is the council looking to do?
Um, personally, I don't see any issue with, uh, letting them go forward a little bit with trying to develop this idea further, so that when we bring it before the new council members, they would have a, a better-developed plan in front of them. Um, I favor having it around the Tressle. I'm open to other ideas, but, uh, I, I would love to find, even if it slightly conceals the Tressle. I, I can't, uh, see BNSF coming through and putting in a nice, beautiful Tressle anytime soon. That would be wonderful, and then we can put it somewhere else, uh, because I do believe there's other places it would be better suited. Uh, it feels a little wasteful to put two there, but at the same time, concealment, uh, even if it's slight, might be helpful.
Okay. Councilman Allen?
I kind of agree with Mark. He, he's got a bucket full, and he's going to be busy right up to his retirement, and it, it's going to take some money to do this project, and I don't know that we have the money to do it. Uh, I think you, you should go back to the drawing board and see if we... I think you, you should go back to the drawing board and see if we can do something a little cheaper and still accomplish the same thing. That's, that's a, that's a big project and I know when you start dealing with the highway and the railroad and all that stuff, it's, it's a, it's a can of worms. So I know Mark, I can see Mark for the next year or two. And, and if we have any extra money, it needs to be put into the infrastructure of the city. There's so many things that need to be done. So I don't know how you're going to fund this project, but I think you should, should plan that and see where you're going to get the money because the city ain't overflowing with money and times are tough. So I think it's, I think it's pretty and it, it looks nice, but I don't know that the city can afford that right now. And I know Mark is, he's pretty well booked up. And I see the man working here eight, seven, eight, even later. I drive by here sometime and he's, he's putting in a lot of hours and, and he's got a lot of work. I don't know, I, I'm not going to be here, but I, I will see it if it's there. But I worry about the money, the money thing. And I don't know, it's, Mark knows more about it than I do and I, I'm sure he's not going to be able to tackle anything that for the next couple of years because he's got a whole lot of stuff. So that's all I got.
Madam Mayor, just final, final comments from me. I think relocating them to different positions would be better than clustering them by the trestle. That's, Cedar Woolley is not Metcalf Street. You're welcoming them to the people, to the community. And it is, the community is not two or three streets downtown.
No.
And I think if it was relocated out further, people might just, wow, this is a cute little town and fall in love with the town. So that's my last two bits worth.
And maybe it's a conversation that should be taken up with the city, if the city, with citizens. Maybe citizens should have a say-so or input in this.
Yeah, definitely. I think so. I will put forth that at the time of this proposal and development, I did have business support, which is part of the city. And there was support for it around the trestle. And then the finances were going to come a lot from those businesses who support this community. And so if we want to try something else or have the city do it all, that works, too. It's going to be costly and I would imagine that as well. So up for a discussion another day. Thanks, Chris. Yes, please.
Mike can answer that question for you?
Well, the ones I was mentioning, they're going to call, they're, they're low, they don't block the vision. And you can do that. Roundabouts, depends on the size of the center line.
I, I just, in my opinion, it would be nice to have something directed from downtown instead of pushing it off. If you could do some sort of, I wouldn't call it a Band-Aid, but, you know, something to kind of get through it.
Something in the interim, you're pretty much saying?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, well, the roundabout at Reshaw is actually in the perfect location for that. Folks that are driving eastbound anyway, they can see that. They already have pretty good signs at Ferry Street, but the entry sign they have there directing people in that would also catch people going in that direction. That's a possibility.
Yes, go ahead. Councilman McGoffin?
I was just going to ask if, you know, I like the discussion of when the three new council members come on, letting them have a say in this, too. Would it make sense to direct this discussion to a committee in 2024 and have them work on specific things like the final design, how much it would cost, and then how much business support we could get? I think it'd be really helpful for the larger council at a whole to see it come back from committee with, you know, this is the cost. We have like 85% covered by businesses. We've done the permitting, this is what we'll have to do. And then that will give you guys like some time on the committees, maybe that you can spend that time helping the project, you know, move along throughout 2024, so in 2025.
So tonight, we did have a, we did have a council meeting that's really good. And I'm thinking maybe the strategic goal setting might be a good place to have it, set that goal and then look at it, determine how to look at it more intently, to be intentional about what we're going to be doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be great. I think that was the attempt in the Parks and Rec Committee when all of this first got drafted up with the committee of people to try and work with Mark and we reached out to businesses. And when we weren't able to follow through, I think it was a little bit uncomfortable for the businesses that had made commitments at that time. So again, you know, maybe they'll rejoin back in. It's hard to get business support without a draft. It's hard to get a draft without finances. We can't anticipate somebody to just draft all of this work for free, although it is, thank you very much for everything you've done and for the people who have put into it. But I would agree, if we put it in a committee, we would want to make sure that we at least have a little bit more commitment than we did in the Parks and Rec Committee when we first brought this up.
Councilman Burns?
What kind of finance would you expect? Like we need to put $5,000 or $10,000 on the table for the opportunity to develop it so that as it goes through the committee, there's the ability to?
I think it would be, what are you looking to do? Because we can, Mark can tell you, five, $10,000. Yeah, yeah.
Just throwing a number out there, I think you're probably looking at the time we paid for a structural engineer to do the foundation design for this and what it could suit the structure on it. Unless that's something that you, 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 the structural engineer support and do all that stuff. So those are expensive and, and the permitting is going to cost some money to get that done as well. I'm thinking you probably need to have a budget of about $50,000 for doing all that planning personally. That's a wag, I'll admit to that, but.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a $10,000 job by any means, I don't think.
No. Yeah, okay.
Let's table it for the next year and see what the next committee wants to do, next council. Give it a go. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Nick. Yeah, okay. There is nothing else on our agenda. I am going to move to adjourn. Before I do, I want to make mention that the next council meeting, as well as the Public Safety Committee meeting, is next Wednesday, December 13th at 6:00 PM. So have a safe night, everybody. Thank you. We're adjourned.